Okay, at this time let us sit down and please put in the patience and and put Mr. Owens to lead us into the presentation.
Thanks, Brett. Gracious Father, we are blessed today, Lord. We just thank you, Father, for this gathering here today. And we ask your blessing on everyone here. Father, we pray that all we do and say today, Lord, will be for the good of the county, Lord, and we'll be in accordance with your will. Father, we thank you for wisdom and discernment that's day, Lord. And we just ask you for good health, Lord, for all of us. And we just thank you again for blessing Gates County, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll turn it back now and require for the First we have to install our new commissioners. So... I'm John Jacob.
I'm John Jacob.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution and laws
and the Constitution and laws
of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith.
of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of my office
the duties of my office
as Gates County Commissioner
as Gates County Commissioner
and that I will not allow
and that I will not allow
my actions
my actions
to be influenced
to be influenced
by personal or political friendships
by personal or political friendships
or obligations
or obligations
so help me God
so help me God.
At this time, I am Jack Owens.
I am Jack Owens.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support
that I will support
and maintain
and maintain
the Constitution and laws
the Constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution and laws
and the Constitution and laws
of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith.
of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of my office
the duties of my office
as Gates County Commissioner
as Gates County Commissioner
and that I will not allow
and that I will not allow
my actions
my actions
to be influenced
to be influenced
by personal or political friendships
by personal or political friendships
or obligations
or obligations
so help me God
so help me God.
At this time, I will nominate the first order of business is the selection of Chair and Vice Chair. We would like to approve the nomination of Chair of the East County Board of Commissioners.
Madam Chair, I would like to make the nomination and motion together that Madam Chairman Linda Hopford did not nominate as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
You don't have to say it.
I'll say it.
Any other nominations? Well, you made the nomination and the motion correct.
Right, yes. Madam Chairman, I will make a motion to close the nominations.
I'll second that motion.
In favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. All those in favor of Linda Hopford being Chair of the East County Board of Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can be Chair if you'd like to continue.
We're going to the chair.
Okay. I would like to make the nominations for Vice Chair of the East County Board of Commissioners.
I would like to nominate Jack Owens as Vice Chair.
I'll second the motion.
Third motion, the nomination closed. Let's see what we can.
I'll say it. Okay. All those in favor of nominations being closed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. All those in favor of Jack Owens being Vice Chair of the East County Board of Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. I'll try to meet an offer to Chair of the Hall.
So leave.
Okay, at this time, and thank you, gentlemen in the floor, for talking. I hope you have confidence in me and I should run the meetings well. Okay, first order of business is approval of amendments for our local meeting on November 7th, divided in eighteen, and November 19th, divided in eighteen. I'll entertain the motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion. As per today's motion, number, I think, number twenty-seven.
Okay, is there any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, first item of business then is the delegations. Do you have anyone signed up? Okay, there's no unannounced delegations and there are no unannounced delegations that we have. Okay, moving right along, administrative reports, and we'll go to county managers. This is for October 20th through November 16th. Work is still progressing on the wastewater project. Power installation has been delayed, but the remainder of the project is on schedule. Work is progressing on the historic fourhouses as well. Alter since Malden and Jenkins works from November 5th through November 16th in the county. Due to additional work that must be done to all the completion date has not been finalized as of this writing. The 2018 City BG North Carolina Neighborhood Freedom Grant application for $750,000 was submitted by Mr. David and Associates on behalf of Gates County. Money for a senior center was not included in the application. The quote from A.R. Chesson was $300,000. Based upon the recommendations of Mr. Barnett, the application would be stronger without the request of $100,000 for the senior center. Fourhouses have already been identified as being potential that the grant is awarded. The flu vaccination clinic was held for county employees on October 22nd. Thank you to Christie Meyer for coordinating. Commissioners attended a symbolic grant breaking at Central Middle Street on October 26th. Construction has not begun due to an issue with design as it relates to the footers and the roof. And I have requested from the Board of Education to be here today to discuss that, and at this time I do not see anyone. Gates County is considered a work-ready community, and there should have been a handout in your pocket to explain what that is. If you would like more information from Bennett and Commissioners, that can be arranged as well. Juvenile Convention Council met on November 14th. Elegant Funch is a new area consultant. Risk factor statistics were reviewed. Request for proposals for fiscal year 2021 will be developed in January of 2019. A resolution to request additional funding for the new RACE ACE legislation is on the agenda, and we actually did that at the second November meeting. The OEC Foundation met with stakeholders on November 15th to discuss community safety nets as they develop a new process. Do you have any questions?
No questions specifically, but I went over a little earlier and looked at the West Wing Courthouse, and there they're doing a little staining and painting, and it looks good. New hardwood floors down, and so they're making progress.
I did a ten, a meeting Friday at Central with Chair Drake Felton, along with the architect and with A.R. Chesson. The rebar and cement work is supposed to begin this week, by what committee? And they were, they had some concerns, but they've got those completed. The architect is sending in some new designs, or has already sent them to the press. Okay, and I do have a kind of line that I can share with the board that they can look at, that they can use.
Did they say the new design of the state's plan, Dylan Inspector, and the state is already prepared?
They did not say that. But I would assume that they did. Something wrong. We run each other.
They have not received anything. Okay.
Madam Chairman, our chairman, you're us. It's not worth a bitch.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The expected completion date for wastewater project?
Is anticipated? Well, the project is anticipated, this may be completed as of December 31st, but with the power installation based upon what the Dominion representative said, that would be in January, but all of the testing that needs to be done for the rest of the project to be considered completed in December with the generators that they have out there.
I'm not sure of that.
That I'm not 100% sure of with the exact date. It would depend on whether the power is actually installed.
Oh.
Once the power's installed, I can give you a better date, because they have not provided a date to us as to when they will install the power, even though we have repeatedly asked.
I'm also concerned this is a work-ready community. It might be nice if they come in January and give us a short presentation. I'm supposed to Commissioner Jordan, working with the annual commission, certainly has been aware of the work on the course, and I am, but it's necessary for him to be involved.
Okay, any other questions for the county manager? Okay, county manager, Ms. Lang, what is happening to you?
Our tax is our... Despite the appearance of tax work, it does continue this way. We're doing good.
Are you thinking evil to people?
Yes, yes, just jumping over it. Through scraps and trying to figure it out. My email indicated that tax collected before we do our closeouts now on the first day of the month, so that will be forthcoming this afternoon. The same will take place January 2nd. The way the meeting failed, of course, that's a report from the board. It gives us the chance to capture the entire lot, so we'll get that to you this afternoon as soon as we make it. We do have some refunds certainly for, in approval for board, two refunds will actually be out for one D M D. Refund now, $220,000 for two cents.
Okay, so this time number one, D M D, taxpayer expression, D K Boyden Jr., all the documentation that is attached to the hour's report, please close your board.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to add a motion that we do accept that refund, zero, zero, one, three, four.
Correct. For $220,000 for two cents.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct. The closing attorney has been...
Okay, and please close your board with the four refunds.
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
That motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, and these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they
mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct. The closing attorney has been...
Okay, and please close your board with the four refunds.
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
That motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct. The closing attorney has been...
Okay, and please close your board with the four refunds. Okay, and what's the pleasure of board with the four refunds?
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
That motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct.
The closing attorney has been... Okay, and what's the pleasure of board with the four refunds?
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
That motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct.
The closing attorney has been... Okay, and what's the pleasure of board with the four refunds?
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
Okay, at this time, and thank you, gentlemen in the floor, for talking. I hope you have confidence in me and I should run the meetings well. Okay, first order of business is the approval of amendments for our local meeting on November 7th, divided in eighteen, and November 19th, divided in eighteen. I'll entertain the motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion. As per today's motion, number, I think, number twenty-seven.
Okay, is there any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, first item of business then is the delegations. Do you have anyone signed up? Okay, there's no unannounced delegations and there are no unannounced delegations that we have. Okay, moving right along, administrative reports, and we'll go to county managers. This is for October 20th through November 16th. Work is still progressing on the wastewater project. Power installation has been delayed, but the remainder of the project is on schedule. Work is progressing on the historic fourhouses as well. Alter since Malden and Jenkins works from November 5th through November 16th in the county. Due to additional work that must be done to all the completion date has not been finalized as of this writing. The 2018 City BG North Carolina Neighborhood Freedom Grant application for $750,000 was submitted by Mr. David and Associates on behalf of Gates County. Money for a senior center was not included in the application. The quote from A.R. Chesson was $300,000. Based upon the recommendations of Mr. Barnett, the application would be stronger without the request of $100,000 for the senior center. Fourhouses have already been identified as being potential that the grant is awarded. The flu vaccination clinic was held for county employees on October 22nd. Thank you to Christie Meyer for coordinating. Commissioners attended a symbolic grant breaking at Central Middle Street on October 26th. Construction has not begun due to an issue with design as it relates to the footer to end of roof. And I have requested from the Board of Education to be here today to discuss that, and at this time I do not see anyone. Gates County is considered a work-ready community, and there should have been a handout in your pocket to explain what that is. If you would like more information from Bennett and Commissioners, that can be arranged as well. Juvenile Convention Council met on November 14th. Elegant Funch is a new area consultant. Risk factor statistics were reviewed. Request for proposals for fiscal year 2021 will be developed in January of 2019. A resolution to request additional funding for the new RACE ACE legislation is on the agenda, and we actually did that at the second November meeting. The OEC Foundation met with stakeholders on November 15th to discuss community safety nets as they develop a new process. Do you have any questions?
No questions specifically, but I went over a little earlier and looked at the West Wing Courthouse, and there they're doing a little staining and painting, and it looks good. New hardwood floors down, and so they're making progress.
I did a ten, a meeting Friday at Central with Chair Drake Felton, along with the architect and with A.R. Chesson. The rebar and cement work is supposed to begin this week, by what committee? And they were, they had some concerns, but they've got those completed. The architect is sending in some new designs, or has already sent them to the press. Okay, and I do have a kind of line that I can share with the board that they can look at, that they can use.
Did they say the new design of the state's plan, Dylan Inspector, and the state is already prepared?
They did not say that. But I would assume that they did. But something wrong. We run each other.
They have not received anything. Okay.
Madam Chairman? Our chairman, you're us. It's not worth a bitch.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The expected completion date for wastewater project?
Is anticipated? Well, the project is anticipated, this may be completed as of December 31st, but with the power installation based upon what the Dominion representative said, that would be in January, but all of the testing that needs to be done for the rest of the project to be considered completed in December with the generators that they have out there.
I'm not sure of that.
That I'm not 100% sure of with the exact date. It would depend on whether the power is actually installed.
Oh.
Once the power's installed, I can give you a better date, because they have not provided a date to us as to when they will install the power, even though we have repeatedly asked.
I'm also concerned this is a work-ready community. It might be nice if they come in January and give us a short presentation. I'm supposed to Commissioner Jordan, working with the annual commission, certainly has been aware of the work on the course, and I am, but it's necessary for him to be involved.
Okay, any other questions for the county manager? Okay, county manager, Ms. Lang, what is happening to you?
Our tax is our... Despite the appearance of tax work, it does continue this way. We're doing good.
Are you thinking evil to people?
Yes, yes, just jumping over it. Through scraps and trying to figure it out. My email indicated that tax collected before we do our closeouts now on the first day of the month, so that will be forthcoming this afternoon. The same will take place January 2nd. The way the meeting failed, of course, that's a report from the board. It gives us the chance to capture the entire lot, so we'll get that to you this afternoon as soon as we make it. We do have some refunds certainly for, in approval for board, two refunds will actually be out for one D M D. Refund now, $220,000 for two cents.
Okay, so this time number one, D M D, taxpayer expression, D K Boyden Jr., all the documentation that is attached to the hour's report, please close your board.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to add a motion that we do accept that refund, zero, zero, one, three, four.
Correct. For $220,000 for two cents.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct. The closing attorney has been...
Okay, and please close your board with the four refunds.
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
That motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy.
That is correct. The closing attorney has been...
Okay, and what's the pleasure of board with the four refunds?
My commissioner can read the check. I'll say it.
That motion's been made, seconded, in a discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at documentation on the next grouping of refunds, and they're like they're all on residential?
Yes.
I see they're all through pro logic.
That's right.
I'd like to pull the board and see if they're in favor of doing all those at one time? What about that?
And these are where the, really, the taxpayers pay, pay from taxes and they mortgage back as a subsidy. Okay, and what's the pleasure of board with the four refunds? Okay, any other reports or any other concerns we have, reports that could have been given? Okay, here are none. Can we, county planner, I think it was a little off this time, by the numbers, that started off off...
Yes, the parade is on the 8th, and I do know to Commissioners that any will be ready to make proper nominations, so if you can let me know at the end of this meeting, please. And on the 21st, there will be the county Christmas luncheon for county 28th. The offices are closed on 24th, 25th, and 26th.
And the luncheon is at...
It'll be here, it'll be from probably about 1:30 to 2:30. So...
And the offices will close 24th, 25th, and 26th?
Correct.
Would you like to go to luncheon? Would you give me that?
The 21st.
Well, who?
Yes, if you come in, lunch will be on the table.
Okay.
And it is covered in dish.
Does that make her famous cup of dish, Jack?
Do I have to sing to you as you?
Um...
That's what I'm saying. I'm not sure what I have planned.
Okay, any other concerns or questions you might have for any of the departments?
Madam Chairman, I actually have a question.
Yes?
Looking through this, and it's my first time, so very willing to have a question from Miss Hendricks with custom service, she is here.
Yes, she is.
May I ask her a question, this one by her report?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Let me get back to you. Your report states that late fee for assessing the number of accounts robocalls replaced to 778 accounts with 550 delivered calls. Can you explain the purpose of the robocalls and what the difference in the number delivered to total calls dated sub?
Yes, robocalls is just courtesy from the county as a reminder that we have not received your payment by our first due date. We have the 16th as your due date, we have the 26th as the final date because order will be turned off on the following day. So this is just a courtesy reminder, and it's the most cost-effective reminder that we can come up with due to the rising cost of postage, and we can have any cents per call for each call that is completed, whether it be actually answered or if it goes to an answering machine. And as I said, it stays on the message because it's my voice, that this is just a courtesy call as a reminder that we have received your current payment.
So we're missing 200 of them.
And that is...
They're not answered, or we got bad phone numbers?
Oh, we have bad numbers. That's an ongoing battle with us when we speak with customers to get a good number to be able to assess and reach them by. And you change your phone number if you've moved and you were using a landline. We do all we can to keep that as the current, most effective, and efficient phone number listing for each account, but they're just bad numbers or they just choose not to answer.
If they have caller ID, they can see you.
If they have caller ID, they can see who you are.
But it doesn't come up as a Gates County number?
And if it's a robocall, it's pretty cheap.
Yeah, they are, eight cents per call versus the cost of postage and a daily. Okay, your wife?
Could we, could we look into, it being a number outside the county, nobody in my household would probably answer either?
Okay, any old reports or any old concerns or has reports that we have been given? Any here none? Do we, um, Hank Power, I think it was a little off this time, um, by the numbers. It started off well.
Yes, the, the parade is on the eighth and I do know to commissioners that any will be ready to start to make proper combinations. So if you can let me know at the end of this meeting please. And on the twenty first, there will be the county Christmas luncheon for county twenty. The offices is closed the twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and twenty sixth.
And the luncheon is at?
It'll be here, it'll be from probably about one thirty to two thirty or so.
And the offices will close twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and twenty sixth?
Correct.
Would you like to go luncheon, would you give, give me that?
The twenty first.
Well, who?
Yes, if you come in, lunch will be on table. And it is kind of dish.
So make your famous cup of dip.
Yeah. Do I have to sing again as you?
Um, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure what I have planned. Okay, um, any old concerns or questions you might have for any of the departments?
Chairman, I actually have a question. Um, looking through this, and it's my first time, so very good. I have a question for Miss Hendricks with custom service. She is here.
Yes, she is.
May I ask her a question, just one by her report?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Let me get back to you. Your report states that late fee for assessing the number of accounts robocalls replaced to two to seven hundred and seventy eight accounts with five hundred and fifty delivered calls. Can you explain the purpose of the robocalls and what the difference in the number delivered to total calls dated sub?
Yes, robocalls is just courtesy of the county as a reminder that we have not received your payment by our first due date. We have the sixteenth as your due date, we have the twenty sixth as the final date because, um, water will be turned off on the following day. So this is just a courtesy reminder. And it's the most cost effective reminder that we can come up with due to the rising cost of postage. And we can hand back instant per call for each call that is completed, whether it be actually answered or if it goes to an answering machine. And as I said, it stays on the message because it's my voice that this is just a courtesy call as a reminder that we have received your current payment.
So we're missing two hundred.
And that is?
They're not accurate or we got bad phone numbers?
Oh, we have bad numbers. That's an ongoing battle with us when we speak with customers to get a good number to be able to assess and reach them by. If you change your phone number, if you've moved and you were using a landline, um, we do all we can to keep that as the current most effective, um, and efficient phone number listing for each county. But they're just bad numbers or they just choose not to answer.
If they have caller ID, they can see you.
If they have caller ID, they can see who you are. And-
But it doesn't come up as a Gates County number?
And if it's a robocall, it's pretty cheap.
Yeah, they are instant per call versus the cost of postage and a daily.
Thank you. Could we, uh, could we look into, um, it, it being a, a number outside the county, nobody in my household would probably answer either. Could we look into the prob, the situation where maybe Gates County Water Department could be posted?
No, I think we, because I put my name on the list sometimes so I can make sure exactly what time the list goes out. And mine didn't come in from the Water Department. It didn't happen, two zero zero three, so it was a long number.
A three five seven.
A three five seven, yes.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, any other? Okay, moving on to, um, our next item of business is public hearing. At this time, um, do I have a motion to enter into a public hearing?
So move, second motion, I'm going to.
Motion made in second. Um, all of you say aye?
Aye.
All ayes. At this time, we will enter into a public hearing outside the, um, agricultural district that we are, um, that has been proposed.
You will be today before you have the voluntary ag district enhanced voluntary ag district ordinance several, probably about a year ago or so, or wrapped with law before you. And during that time, it has been reviewed numerous times by not just our county attorney, but also by other attorneys who have worked, if I remember correctly, with Farm Bureau and I believe it was another county as well. And this ordinance was formatted after another county's ordinance. Matt Lo is here today, I believe, as the main speaker. If you have any questions, the PNC's board members and members who are on the voluntary ag district are also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, um, Matt, would you like to speak?
I think he's here to answer questions.
I'll answer, I'll answer your first question. Um, I know surrounding counties have this already. Can you mention those that are already in place?
Um, I know Chalons, Quinones, Hartford, I believe Burton.
I believe there are only four counties that you have in.
Unless, unless the other counties in the whole state had it, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make, I thought I was the pants I was on here. So I just wanted to make sure that this is not new to us. It's not something we're trying, it's already been tried. And you see signs of it in the counties. Like when you go to Quinones, they say, they sign up, this is a volunteer agricultural.
This, uh, is predominant in all of the counties. Of course, things have changed since our last meeting, so I'm not sure. I think at that time, there were four that did not, and two of those had, had pending.
What is the biggest advantage in having this type of ordinance for the county in regards to our farmers? This is an ordinance, an ordinance that will perpetuate the rural lifestyle of farming in areas that the individuals in that area desire. On the other side, it will designate those areas so that people who are interested in buying or moving into the area will know that the area they're moving to is an agricultural area. And this, of course, covers all types of agriculture and timber building. It's, uh, all the information is contained in the document.
Well, just looking at, at the first page of the, of the article, the document, just the fact that it says agricultural advisory board tells us that we have a group already established that will be our voice if an issue comes up. The commissioners have a group to work with. Um, and, you know, a lot of times if you have an advisory board in place when an issue comes up, um, that'll help us right out of the gate. And we have one. And we have, you know, the expertise of the years that you guys have had in farming to, to help us up here. So, um, to me, that's one of the big, one of the big advantages. And I've talked to Reggie asking, you know, about chicken houses and things like that. From time to time, he'll tell me of something that's coming, that's coming up. And he says, they're trying to get that, a crack in that door, you know, to, to, uh, to hinder us, to put some more regulations on this or something. So to me, that's, that's one of the, one of the big advantages that has already established. For the next issue, we don't even know what it is.
Trying to protect farming and, uh, preserve the, the farming lifestyle we have.
Yep. And also with people moving in, we pay for a lot of people moving in to understand, you know, you're going to have slow movement, they hear this going down the highways. Uh, you know, chicken houses occasionally where they're being cleaned out or whatever, there is some smell, but that's just the way of life. Uh, and it just makes them aware that they are moving into an agricultural region.
And since, since we have all of the board members here, as, as I went through this too, reading, of course, you see different things. Uh, as board members, is there anything that you see that should be tweaked within the procedures? Is there anything that you don't like or something that you can get along with?
We, we beat it up like good. We didn't have any calls then. So, you know, and state, you know, reword that we put in, the people of Raleigh have approved it. And the thing that we changed from the Chalons was, you know, the people of Raleigh said, you know, good, so.
We had the advantage of several other counties' auditors to, to work with. And they were quite varied. I, I can assure you that, uh, that ours is not a copy of any ones because we found some things in some other counties that just didn't fit Gates County. Uh, we, uh, we're kind of disadvantaged today. They, they called it, and someone was kind of the glue that worked this. I hope she did all our prayers. She was quite instrumental in gathering all the information and getting this before. And we have met with the tax and, and, uh, registered deeds and all of these other, so, because these, um, volunteer ag areas would be under the registered deeds, they'd be designated as such. The area will also have visual signs, uh, from the road that you're interested in entering an ag district.
Excellent. And we, we, we're talking, um, we're hearing the term district, this is a sort of audience, but we're talking about the county.
There will be districts within the county. It's not, it, it could be the whole county, but it does not have to be.
And is there anything, um, I didn't read this four or five times, but is there anything in here that says that you, that you'll be coming before the commissioners once a year or anything like that?
I don't know. I think the courts will report it. It does say if, if commissioners appoints most of the board, then, um, commissioners can excuse the number with no reason.
I, I believe that there is a yearly report that you turn in to Raleigh, isn't it?
Oh, yes, that, that, that's.
And I believe-
And I'm sure we'll get funky about that as well.
Sir, I think the terms are standard, right?
Yeah.
All right. Why would you give very sexy a turn before we interrupt you?
No. I think we've got it.
Okay, commissioners, anybody else have a comment?
Very good, okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
So move.
Motion to be made in public circuit. All those in favor say aye. Uh, okay. Now we have to vote on this. Um, do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I will make a motion, uh, that we accept, uh, this, um, voluntary agricultural district document in front of us today. And, um, glad that we have it in the county.
And I'll second that motion and, and we refer to it as Article Five in the-
No, it's called voluntary agricultural district enhanced voluntary agricultural district ordinance.
Ordinance.
That'll be it.
So a motion to be made in public circuit in discussion. Hear none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, thank you for coming. Um, and, you know, we are looking forward to this, for any time. At this time, we want to take a five-minute recess. Okay, I guess we're ready to get back started. Um, there's no old business?
Correct.
And the new business. And I know that the wind ordinance will review. Good morning.
Right.
Congratulations to everyone. We're here to talk in now. As I, I put in your packages, the wind energy works for the planning board because of the ordinance 2018, they have sent for your review and their recommendation, they filled out the case for counting and everything and stuff. The reason for this at this point is, uh, the government's executive order has asked that we get this wind ordinance together starting in the next year and have something for permits cannot be processed or completed. We still have that something we've got, which we probably have none. And the ordinance itself is a model ordinance that's been around in many of the surrounding counties, um, who use this. And it fits, definitely fits our needs. Um, it was worked on by NC State, their sustainable energy. And the school of government was also involved, the UNC. The model is basically a budget. We did just a few things that I'm going to go over, not to make it more restrictive, but to fit the county's needs and what they felt. And hopefully you'll agree. I may not, I may add something else. So I'll begin, um, the ordinance number two nineteen dash zero one. And the wind ordinance for wind energy facilities in Gates County, number 2018. I'll just tell you the purpose. I'm not a memory of what's the order we're looking for. So I'll just read the purpose. The purpose of the ordinance is to provide for the regulation of the construction and operation of wind energy facilities in Gates County, subject to reasonable conditions that will protect the environment, public health, safety, and welfare. And then we have the definition, which is self-explanatory. We do not change anything within that part either. I think the three biggest things to take out of that are the wind energy facility sizes. They're small, medium, and large. And they're based on what they produce, even the, um, we don't really know what they produce as of yet, until we have. So I'm not first, the engineer is the guy who's doing it. That kind of explains that part of it because that's how our ordinance is set up. Is, as you'll see on page four, the table of permitted uses, this is a recommendation from the planning board. This is something we can just, not the small, medium, and large, but in our zones, in our district, and cultural, residential. Is it permitted or special use? If it's empty, it's not permitted. Anything with the P, if it's permitted by right, this would be a special use, remember, required from the board to discuss.
Okay, so let's, um, come in. Uh, O, N, R, M, F. Do you want to write something about that too?
Yes.
And it's going to be what?
What's that? What are the uses?
No, it was, yes, it was going, went through the initials there.
Oh, it was an institutional, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then high family, residential, low high family, yes. Those are definitely. And basically for everybody to understand, small is like when people have just a wind turbine, do, do synergy with the planning board, or just something that's very small.
Yes, one, that is a single.
All right. Uh, and the next big thing, um, decommissioning. We would have a performance guarantee that matches the solar farm performance guarantee. That is what seems to be a, a good, I think, good thing. Definitely gets the attention, people to do the right thing. You definitely remember this thing.
We're talking on page five?
Yes, page five.
Oh, yeah.
From the new one.
And that came to light as we, we read it, so that's followed, so.
The next place I think where it draws the attention is set on page six, the setbacks. The setbacks for each facility, this is what will determine how close they can get to the property lines or occupied numbers, any dwellings like that. Um, and that's exactly what this means. If the height includes the blade to the foundation is multiplied by this multiple, one point one, you multiply the current height and elevation of the foundation of the road. And this would give them a fall protection. And the maximum height is then the biggest item that we'll get. A small system, the planning board recommended a hundred and twenty feet, medium and large scale, maximum three hundred feet. And is that what the one there at Quinones and past the time years? They're named there. Some of them there, and, you know, they can be all different sizes because of the blades can be different for each one. So I couldn't tell you exactly what they are and what they are close to three hundred feet. I know over the last year or so, when we did this county, when it was raining or something, uh, on that, they had been tracking the, uh, one there. And, you know, it has not reached its potential. I mean, what they said that would be their, like, that they generate, very rarely did they meet what they had promised to generate. Um, I kind of followed at one point. I don't know, are, that the, um, wind turbines, you know, you have to have a certain amount of wind. And that we were probably not in a area that we had enough wind. We are not in an optimum zone, but we were for more. The technology is coming. And to make these turn faster, possibly happen. And we haven't been privy to that technology map. I, I thought I had read that we were not. Yes, you're right. We're not in an optimum zone. And I knew that the one there at Walmore, I mean, Quinones and all, that they had never reached that potential. So that's, didn't bode well out of that. Right. And they can't wait, you really can't get what they produce as far as kilowatts again, and really them.
I ask a question. Has the Navy or the Air Force asked what MOU this pertains to height?
There's a clearinghouse for anything military. Um, and they are required to start at the state level first too. Anything that is submitted as far as any, and they pertain to the large-scale facilities. Um, we're actually in a zone, a twenty-eight mile radius. The closest to large-scale facility that I was told that can be in congregate Gates County would be maybe like near the Winton Bridge, about in that area. We're kind of, we're kind of zoned out. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. We're kind of zoned out because of the military and Hampton Roads, the radar, the reach. There's a twenty-eight mile loop that MIT came up with when they did a study just a few months ago. They released those findings. And we are in the twenty-eight mile radius except toward towards the end of the year or to the end of March. So for a large-scale facility, it seems they're not letting them expand. So in doubt, they-
That's going to be, uh, we're pro fly. So I would say Winton has, got to be very, very close to, to the eight, I would say.
Yeah.
Um, recently, somebody told me they went on a tour of the facility over in Pasco Bank over there. And I believe they told me there were a hundred and eight wind turbines.
That's a tremendous number. They were permitted for more. And that's when they said no more after the MIT study. So they keep a watch, definitely.
Did the, um, did the planning board ever go visit that site? I know back when I was on the planning board, it was discussed.
Yeah, we traveled. Um, we contacted some of the managers out there and then returned. Just, it was after the MIT report. So it was a lot going on. And it also laboredly, which we understood. I did. But anyway, if anyone can go, you know, we said if you can go see it, we'd do it. It's interesting if you can get back there.
One thing to keep in mind, guys, is as far as efficiency, what we're turning out is always this, um, the tax advantages is in there. So, so they're looking for all kinds of angles.
Now, some of the, some of the tax, um, advantage, you know, have gone out, but I hear some may come back. So anyway, all right. The next one is the noise and shadow flicker. That's something we did not change either. That's based on industry standards and, you know, they can stop the turbines at any time. And that's something that's limited, um, per year and for the non-participating landowners and all of that. And then the last page, I do have one change. And that's B under decommissioning. That should be four thousand seven, the last page. B under the decommissioning, we went around and we got the below grade forty-two inches of the planning board finally came up with to fill it in. Not thirty-six? No.
So forty-two versus thirty-six?
Yes. Should be forty-two. And that's the, that's the one other change. Okay, does anyone have additional questions?
Lisa, how many counties have winter rips in place right now?
Um, as far as counties, they're still working on them.
I know we were being, the, the planning board was being proactive.
Yes.
Months ago when this was brought up. Very, very proactive.
Very proactive. And starting and trying to get it done. Because our surrounding, you know, Chomong, Quinones, Passaple, of course, because they've got one. But in some of the coastal communities. And that's what this model ordinance was written for, is the coastal community, you know, in mind. As far as the number, they're working on it now because of the executive order. So we're going to get a final number. And Mr. Callen, I think he's also as well. We had a really good workshop back in April for NC State. They came and educated us a bit. Well, it's actually the order, everybody's going to be on board. Yes. Oh, they're, that's, that's exactly right. We'll be ahead of the curve. That's right. So it'll be a hundred. If there's anything else.
And it appears too that this is all governed by adoption of Article Six Hundred and Fifty-three and eighty-fourty-five general statute.
Do we have, uh, a list of things that, uh, what makes wind energy more desirable or?
We have a complete presentation for you. I can send to you. Uh, they, when they came in April, Mr. Callen left the original presentation with us. Would you like that?
Uh, yeah, that is, uh, in the course, to be more efficient or just what, what, uh, all the advantages, you know. When we put something in place, we certainly want to know what are we doing and, and I was going to do this.
True.
You know, whether it's a DVA, a lot, okay?
Okay. Also, it's a small footprint. Yes, you can still farm with the wind turbines and stuff, you know. And I'm relating it to solar, you know, there's been arguments. It's green energy no matter what. I mean, it's all good when you look at it. But with the wind turbines, as long as you can still farm around the base and still run the tractors, they'll provide roads in some cases. If it's a large-scale facility, you know, that's totally definitely fine. It's basically, if it's green, they consider it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this time, we need to do, there's actually, you need to take the first review and then come back up for the public hearing. Okay, thank you for your information. Okay, um, the next item of business is Budget Amendment Twenty Seven that we have on, on the table in front of you.
And it is not to be allocated funds within the department. I realize after this, after this had been sent, that that's what it's in. It is actually because the Department of Social Services received additional LEAP revenue from the state. And it's an additional eleven thousand forty dollars for this program. And that is what the budget amendment is for.
Additional funds. Um, refresh me. What is LEAP?
It's a low income.
I've heard it.
For the, basically for the heating. For the, and it starts off with the elderly and then, is it in January?
Yes, from December one through December thirty-first would be for elderly.
Yes, from December one through December thirty-first, we're being for elderly six feet and above, and then if there are funds left, we'll open it up to others beginning January third, uh, January first through March thirty-first, as long as the funds last. We started taking apps today.
Okay.
Is there, what, for household or just kids?
There is a budget, so it is income eligible on that. They look at resources. One cannot have assets of beyond twen, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So, it takes into consideration your income, bank accounts.
And certainly, cold weather times, we want people to stay warm.
Two hundred foot wood vendors, and they can be up to four hundred dollars to help with those that use electricity or propane.
Or, I'm sorry, it does, yes.
Yes, yes.
Whether it's heating.
Yes, natural propane, wood vendors, that's capped at two hundred dollars, kerosene.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Seven of Board's this morning.
Sir?
Motion's been made second and in additional discussion. Hear none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you, and this is something we can help citizens of our county, because we know that a lot of people live in on mountain farms, and the cold weather, it's coming. Data's the same cold, but twice the cold days, mom, so we appreciate the help and help we can get to our citizens. Is anything else under the new business? Okay, hear none? We have citizens comments? Yes. I had to look at him.
I am too, Lord. Let's see, this is, what are we doing about that? Can I understand, about four buildings or something, and a hundred thousand dollars being... And my right, Lord, where do I stand with my thoughts?
Okay.
I didn't hear all the questions.
You were saying, like, when we had the chance to apply for the grant for...
C D D two.
Yeah. So, you could use that money, as the report stated, and you might not get in here, we did not put that in there, because it was only a hundred thousand allocated, what the commissioners had said, and the quote that they received was for three hundred thousand dollars to do the work. And the application based upon the experience of the grant writer was that the grant application would be stronger without a hundred thousand dollars going towards the senior center. There were four houses already identified, and actually, their application was already included in the grant for the houses.
An application has been...
But it was a choice, that there are houses that needed repaid, and we already have a backlog of those, and so if anyone was taken, I could see a citizen, those houses would not be checked. So, it's, you know, a choice, what do you do? Okay. Thank you for your question.
I'm quite sure that you're all coming with the right decision.
Well, you know, some of these houses have been on the list for a while.
I'm not sure what list you're referencing, because we do, we do not maintain a list. The Housing Committee receives applications, and they took from all of the applications that had been received for the other grant programs that we have for houses, these houses, I hate to say the worst, but that's what they were, and that's how they were put in this neighborhood revitalization grant.
And most of Jordan is out at a little house.
Well, wasn't he just really looking for some of the places that is going on a business that is...
No, sir, the county's never considered that. There was a committee that had presented a proposal, but the county never took the action on it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's not a bad issue at this time, I hope. It could come up again on the future. One more question.
Say your name and...
Paylor Norman, Sunberry, one sixty-three Yedder Road. Now, another thing, solar farm, I heard just a little bit about a solar farm, and I didn't get what we're saying. It's not going to have no more than his town?
Definitely, there's not any application there.
There's no application, okay.
Some of the tax credits have gone away, and so that doesn't make it as enticing for people to do that. We haven't seen as many going up in recent, in the last year or so.
I'm sure, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Norman. We always enjoy hearing from you. Okay, and what else? Okay, well, congratulations to Jonathan, who's joining us on the board. Commissioner Jones, we'll let you start with your citizens comment, I mean, commissioner's comments.
No, this is ten or fifteen minutes.
It's about two. Got me on the log wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to serve with you, Dr. Barry Willoughby. There's a number of years of experience sitting beside me. Congratulations to Jack and Ray on your reelection. I'd like to thank my wife and daughters. Daughters have perfect attendance, so they had to make an appearance to get back to school. They were worried coming today, they lose their perfect attendance for a little while. For their support over the last few months, the citizens that let me put up signs, couple of finances, take down the signs, mess it up support, look forward to serving everybody in the county for the next four years. My buddy came in for kissing the day with his dad, and surprised me. That was, that was a pleasant surprise, making the two-hour ride this morning for a few minutes. Do want to remind everybody, this Friday, the Lions Club has their play sale, the fundraiser going on with the parade on Saturday. And this is our last meeting for December, no, no high meeting, so wish everybody happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Mr. Freeman?
Very well, thank you. I would be a miss if I didn't say, certainly honored to serve with my colleagues here, but also the folks in Gates County, and certainly wish you well for Commissioner Jones, who is due to us, but not due to the community. He's done a lot for the community, and so have our commissioners, county manager, Ken Arakawa, so we appreciate that, sir. Wish you well for the holidays and Merry Christmas.
Mr. George?
Yes, I want to congratulate all my little commissioners, both of them, as long as I And I do remind everyone that you probably know that I'm suffering with ALS, a myotropus lateral sclerosis, and there's times a lot of research, but they don't have a cure for it. So, I just keep me in prayer, and there's a lot of research. You can support ALS in various ways. I encourage you to do that, because it's something that we know you're eventually going to cure, but right now, you don't have one. So, thank you for coming. As long as I'll stay, I can serve, I'm going to try to.
Well, it's good to see everybody here today, and congratulations to fellow colleagues, Jonathan and Ray. Letting you guys down the, down the table there, and I'm sure there's a, we're going to continue to have the great cohesive group that we have had for some time here. So, I look forward to the challenges for the county and look forward to working toward those. And I just want to thank you for your fight to come be, come be with us, and we wish you the very best. And just, the parade is what day it's happening?
December the eighth.
December the eighth, so come out, you know, we can have a, I think we have fifty-two, fifty-four floats in our parade. Says a lot about the county. People really don't participate, so if you're not working on a float, please come out and support them, they'll probably can't get you. Good to see everybody.
I'd too like to congratulate Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Freeman, and Commissioner Owens for their election, reelections. I look forward to working with you. Mr. Jordan, as always, a pleasure. He's been on the board, I think, the longest of any of us, and so he is our God. His wisdom, we call on quite often, and we continue to look forward to you being with us as long as possible, and we pray for you, Nigel, that, for your health, and that they will, that they will find cures for ALS. It is a debilitating disease that we, I have another friend who has it, it is comatose, so it's, you know, I'm grateful to him as well. Thank you all for coming. As we approach this holiday season, help us remember that there are a lot of people who are less fortunate than we are, and that maybe we can share some of our biding with those, it's make Christmas merry for everyone, and we know the real reason for the season. And because we do have faith in our Lord, we have, it gives us hope of future, and I look forward to working with this group of gentlemen, and we continue our collegiality and civility as we discuss issues. We're not going to always agree, but we can agree, disagree agreeably. So, look forward to it, and did come back to the parade, and it's fun. And so, we'll adjourn to January and start the new year. Looking forward to it.
January second.
January second. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
A motion to adjourn.
Remove, second.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.